Let's start with the flag, please, please. Flag to the flag, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I see everybody out today. We've got a few people here today. Okay, that's always good. Let's approve the minutes of the August the fifteenth, two thousand seventeen regular meeting. I have a motion. Here, I'll make that motion, signify on Fred. All of you guys vote?
Yes.
All? Okay. Okay, public comments, we have no one signed in?
No, sir.
Okay, our first presentation is Greg Gossey. It was a maintenance update. Mr. Gossey, it seems like you've seen these before.
Yeah, well, it's pretty regular in here. That's a good thing.
You are, but sometimes you're not.
The last meeting, I went over a lot of our maintenance summer work projects that we have started. We did finish all of them, just highlight some of them. There were quite a bit of projects that we worked throughout the summer. Preschool relocating the fence, we done that playground sidewalk. Back for the new group service, we had that done. Midway siding, replaced siding on one building. A lot of outside school painting, doors, all these doors, painting, broad doors. New wall at Guy Valley was repaired and we did put a new roof on the building, painted the buildings that painted, new carpet on the building, new siding. It was really nice up there in front. Plus, we fixed several areas of their manholes that had sunk down, repaired all those during the summer, repaired both areas where standing water was at, five foot long. Did put in a seven-five, seven point five ton roof unit here for conference room and it was really nice this year. A lot of good comments from our service personnel coming in for their training. It was very comfortable, something they had felt a lot. Cool clean, we did finish Hamlin, the elementary side, still working on the middle school side. But just pretty much highlight what we're done there. Other things to get into, Midway, the situation of Midway with the modular. We have that building ready to be demolished. We have removed everything, the awning off of it. Removed all the power, took the power off of it, waiting for the fire alarm people to disconnect the fire alarm so we won't call the problem in the main school. Has to be done, certainly. So that's ready, ready to get rid of, moving along with that. We do have, we did have, we did call several counties, Cudahoula County had two portable, they were vulnerable, they put on the gov deals, we had to go and bid on them. By the time we got to them, they were gone. We did have Jefferson County is offering us one, if we just kind of pick it up, we have to go look at it. I don't know what will be the shape of it. It's a long distance to bring one from Jefferson County, it's fairly old. Something to look at. One of the things I want to explore with fire marshal, a possibility we just build a building. Besides the building, it's a two classroom with a restroom in it, as long as we follow fire marshal recommendations, I'm thinking that we could build a building for around twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. That's something I'd like to explore and see how that works out. We put a block wall, we would build just like a regular building, we would build on that old portion of the building. Get the other one out there. That's thoughts too. I would like to have that back in by Christmas, if at all possible. I told you those are students and I have to teach them, I will put teachers through you.
Greg, if you were to do that, would you be using your existing staff?
Yes, I would probably have somebody to lay the block. We don't have the resources to do that. Laying the block walls and laying it out, so we put the beams in there, put the floor with the whistling light in there, then we take it from there. And we've got the boom truck, all the same, we can set our trusses. You set your trusses up there and just lay it out. And we'll know what we have when we do that. That's something that I think we should explore. We don't want to put a, even if we get a building, let's just say three years down road, the shape that it's in, I don't worry that we're going to be doing this again.
Now, adjacent, is it a regular block building that we tie into the side of?
Well, adjacent to it, it's in the V room, it's kind of high up. We won't be tied into that, we'll come across it with the awning. We did save the awning off of the old, we could even build, we could build something a little different.
In one sense, it wouldn't be any modular, you'd just be dealing with a solid point structure, right? Not solid or whatever.
That's something I'm going to explore, once we get that one out there, then we'll move on. I did, I did come up with some pretty good news on our needs project that we, would be submitted in, October second. I did find out that we have put in, I guess Dana had done this previously, for a special roof cycle for Guy Valley. It was totaled, the submitted was twenty-six thousand dollars. So that has been submitted and talking to Mike Hall, he did, to me and you now, explained to me that we're waiting on a funding source for this. We may or may not get it according to the funding source that Guy Valley had. And that was primarily the building roof that, it's going to be a little bit more than that, but at least, you know, we do have the twenty-six thousand on that part. Also, we were concerned about, here, when school started, we had a lot of workovers that come in by leaking at Guy Valley. Really concerned with that, but the good news is we're in good shape. Well, we found the leak to be in Center Ford was the louvers that come in there, used to open the louvers up to let the heat out. So the louvers itself are on a metal frame that's around it. Looked like some bolts or rusted out or something come out of those louvers. And it bolted to the actual decking and that's where the leak was coming from. There was a tremendous amount of water on the lower side. We were able to push all the water off and check that. They're up there today on the front side, going into a seal and it looked like the flashing was pulled away. So I think we're going to be in a good shape to possibly put this on our needs project for, for the county. And what, I'd like to propose that we actually, Mr. McKiff and I have discussed this, Ray, they also been involved with it, different people that we've had, that we've talked to, based on the kind of funding we could have, I'd like to go on and submit all the looks for funding for the needs project. I think we've got some pretty good news that we need to talk with Guy Valley.
Yes, Greg's right, Greg and Ray, myself, we've had several conversations with the SBA staff. You guys know Ben Ashley, Mike Hall, who worked with us before. The new executive director, Buck Blackwell, has come to him last week. And the message, the last couple of years or so, has been pretty clear to us, not to come and ask the SBA for funding for Guy Valley. You know, that what the comment was made, and what we need to be doing over there was consolidate, combining those schools. Well, there's a new mindset. The complexion of that authority has changed. We have a new executive director, we have a governor, we have a new state board, new state superintendent. We are being highly encouraged to include all of our schools that are in need of a roof repair in our needs project this fall. So that would include Ranger, Guy Valley, West Hamlin, Hamlin, Duval and Midway, provided that we can come up with our part of the money to make that happen. I feel like, based upon those conversations, that we have the full support of the SBA staff through this process. And it's a matter right now, they're trying to decide whether to go all in, if we can afford it, or to maybe break this up into two needs projects over the next two years. So feel good about the direction that we're going. We just need to prioritize and see where we are and have been cutting to the board to, in order to get approval for us to make our submission. So we've already indicated to the SBA that we plan to do it. So we've met that obligation. I think there's maybe, is it a one-page document or something, Greg, we have to send up?
Yeah, we're going to have to do it amended and, like I said, Mr. Ellis and the President of the County is just going to help us get through. We've got to amend our CEFP to show this and once we amend that, then we'll make our submission into a prioritize while our submission wasn't made.
We kind of, initially, we thought maybe we could ask for some funding through the MIP process, because we've been successful last two go-arounds, only to find out that it's in codes and all in policy somewhere that you cannot ask for many for roofing projects during the MIP process and it's red. So this, this needs project's the way to go. Next direction we'll have to turn, that's what we're discussing.
Mr. McKiff touched on the MIP, but what I would like, the MIPs were cool, right? To do more, yeah. Looking at the situation, we have Duval with the seven four, have to tie the building together, since we can consider that as part of the MIP with Duval.
In terms of priority, Greg, the most pressing need we have as far as a roof is concerned is Guy Valley, right?
Yes, Guy Valley is really bad. Guy Valley, then I would say Ranger, Midway and Duval and Hamlin.
We've been told to kind of prioritize those when we submit our plan, in case, you know, there's not enough funding available to do all the work, that at least your most important situations are addressed.
And we've had, and we had Lenny Barker do our roof inspections last year and I've got phone calls into them. And based on what Mike Hall has talked about, he has a lot of weight in how the project or the prioritize, the project sits out there and he knows about it with us, so he's been here, he knows about it. He's a good ass, so we're trying to have all of it.
And Guy Valley, are we talking about just the gym or the school and the gym?
No, we're talking about the school and the gym. Break it down, the Guy Valley project would be two hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred point five thousand. The largest one would be Hamlin Mill on the elementary side, of course, being two, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And Ranger Elementary was a hundred and fifty thousand and Duval was two hundred sixty thousand. A total we're looking at, based on these figures, but we may have to adjust these a little bit between last year and this year, where it was one million, one hundred sixty thousand dollars. That's a couple of factors. I think what we can ask for, two million dollars on needs.
Well, needs projects, a lot of, it really depend upon how much we can afford.
Is there a percentage or something to get paid locally?
Well, we asked that question, right? You want to share what we were told?
I've been told three things. First one was twenty percent, and I was told ten percent, and I think one of them, I'd actually suggest to just don't worry about the local share.
Keep going.
So I think what we'll do is, with each roof, we can, we can allocate for each one of those how much we'd be able to spend locally. That way, if they cut something, then our local share will leave with them. So we don't want to say, we'll put three hundred thousand dollars into this project and then take Guy Valley away and, well, there goes my three hundred thousand dollars. So we'll put maybe ten percent to twenty percent on each one of those, and I think we'll be fine in doing that. And that way, if they cut something, you know, we can take that money with them, so.
We did strategize in that, you guys.
We talked an awful lot about this.
We had a lot of conversation about this. It's important that we have a good plan, an application and a presentation, a presentation involved in December where I'll address the authority members. An opportunity for the authority to ask me questions back and forth, so we'll be ready. Right now, the question is just, how, do we go all in or do we write this up in two pieces?
They're fine, Greg.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Gossey, why he's here today?
Break out Hamlin, part of that was, had a new roof put on a long, long ago.
Well, part, we're looking at the gym area, the metal roof on the lower part is rotten, is rotten. The metal roof was a big expense on that, the lower part. And the upper part of the, of the first floor is the one that was bad on it. The metal roof there, that's the old, real old style metal roof that, not like the metal that you see now. It comes up and it bends over and then there's a seam that's bent down. It's all the seams are given away. He's recommending replacing with the building.
Can you hear me, Pat?
Greg, if we go all in and ask for it all, that probably wouldn't cause them to just totally kick us out, would it? They would probably just give us what they want to on the building.
That's my thinking, and that's why I say, go all in and what they kick us out, we'll put in next year. If we can afford, it comes down, can we afford? We don't want to run too low on major repairs if we have to. If we can afford it, I don't think we have a whole lot to lose if we go all in. We may kick certain projects, once they don't dig, we'll just reset that for next year.
Well, we have to keep the kids dry and we have to keep them warm. And so those are our two main things, so I would say go all in.
I think you can prioritize them, right?
And prioritize them like they ask.
You know, if you put them all in on it, approve them all, then we don't have the money for our part.
Well, Greg's saying we probably would have, in that right, right, you're saying we probably...
Yeah, I think we'll be fine.
If we go the ten percent, zero, like, like, yeah.
Good luck on that there.
But I think we'll prioritize those, and I think, from what we've seen, what happens is, they'll have a, an amount of funding where nothing fits in except for maybe a few roofs, and they can say, well, we'll give you your, your top three, or we'll give you, you know, Midway, Duval, Guy Valley, Ranger, but we're not going to give you Hamlin, West Hamlin. I think by prioritizing that and sticking a, you know, a percentage for each one of those projects, that's what Ben and Mike both said the other day when we were on, Jeff and I talked to them on the phone. And every indication in the process that we watched back in June, that's the way that they do that, if they have money, they'll say, well, we can give that to Lake County, you know, we can give them a million dollars, not the whole thing, we'll give them this roof, this roof and this roof. So by prioritizing them, we'll let them know what we've won. Of course, Mr. McKiff's got to give a presentation before that, so.
There'll be one, five presentations.
We'd even be going over that.
Sounds good, Greg.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Gossey? Thank you, Greg. Okay. Next, you've done the applicant, smarter balance assessment results. Looks bad.
It's easy to look.
I don't go that far. I'm just glad. I'm going through to the phone so I can hear you better.
He's right on top of you. It'd be better if you could see me.
It doesn't matter.
I'd better see the bird.
Does he have a barlay or is he taking it?
We're trying to move the phone a little bit around.
I appreciate the, I appreciate the maintenance director volunteering his, excuse me, the finance director volunteering his salary to meet that ten percent of need.
You got whiskey.
It's very kind of him, sir. Good afternoon, just a little update here from our two thousand sixteen, seventeen West Virginia General Summit of Assessment results. I'll preface all that by saying, the General Summit of Assessment is no more. We will have another Summit of Assessment, but we still don't know what it is. Who knows? By the, by the time that September first rolls around, September first, we are supposed to know what that assessment will be. I have not heard anything, they've been very tightly about it in their webinars on Wednesdays. So we have no indication or clue as to what the Summit of Assessment will be, or even what grade levels we assess at this point.
We kind of know for sure that, well, at the high school level, grade eleven will be the grade that'll be tested.
Right.
And it appears the typical will be the ACT or the SAT.
Right.
Going to testing companies that have been. Lots of options for grades three through eight, that's the other group that it'll be testing. I think there was like twenty companies in the running for their contracts. But we should know something in the next couple of weeks.
We have, we've been hearing that since July first.
We're waiting anxious.
That's right. There's a Wednesday, we're advanced, not, there's not work. Oh, well, I guess if you turn it on, that might help. Just general work.
What's your drop top? That's an ID ten two.
That's right. It's an ID ten two, that's correct. First slide is our English Language Arts scores. This is just across the grade level. This is no specific school, but you can see our, it's an upward trend as you go from third grade to the eleventh grade, we have an upward trend in achievement, which is a good thing. And we start out there in third grade at thirty-three percent and we finish out the eleventh grade at forty-two percent and seventh grade being the highest at forty-seven percent.
You're going to give Sean a...
And I got, I got, I got that in all.
So we have additional information. Now, is this for all of our schools?
Yes, this is for, this is countywide, and I'll break that down in individual schools here just a moment. Math scores, not so much on the positive trend as we go up in grade level. Of course, we do know that rigor goes up, and with rigor going up, we're sure that students find the curriculum a little more challenging. Eighth grade, a little bump up there from the trend at twenty-two percent. Third grade is the highest at thirty-three percent and we finish up the eleventh grade at eleven percent overall proficiency. I've heard myself and principals say in the past, you know, math is, and that's, that's not just a county trend, that is a statewide trend, just so everybody's aware of that, that that is a statewide trend. That's not specific to us, is that that is a downward trend as the, as the grade levels give up. Any questions on math? This is a three-year trend following the Smarter Balance or West Virginia General Summit of Assessment results over the past three years. I have that list about fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth and eleventh grade. So the fifth grade, for example, that would be last year's fifth graders. The red would be two thousand fourteen, fifteen, or their third grade year. The orange would be two thousand fifteen, sixteen, or their fourth grade year, and the yellow be last year of their fifth grade year. So you can see what happens there as far as our, this is the same groups of students tracked over three years. Fifth grade downward trend. Our sixth grade was an upward trend, even though this past year was slightly less than the previous year, but it's still an upward trend. Our seventh grade, same thing, dropped a little bit in the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year, but we began to trend back up last school year. Our last year's eighth graders have been making consistent upward trends in English Language Arts each of the past three years, and so have our eleventh graders, which, again, that's a, that's a promising, promising trend. Everybody understand what I view as towards a trend? Okay. Math, again, kind of consistent with the overall trend. Our fifth graders, starting out third grade, they were, they were up stronger than they slowly decreased each year. Same thing for sixth grade. Seventh grade, kind of, they stayed the same between two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. Our eighth grade had an upward trend, which is a positive note there. And our eleventh graders, while they dropped a little bit off in their tenth grade year, they did bring it back up during their eleventh grade year. Science, just, this is just an overall, you know, science was reduced down to three grade levels and this is just a overall proficiency for this past school year. Scores there, fifth grade at thirty-three percent, sixth, eighth grade at thirty-four percent and tenth grade at twenty-four percent. Not sure what's going to happen there with science as far as our new assessment is concerned. You heard anything in that regard?
No, I haven't heard anything regarding science assessment.
Okay. Here's our individual school, school scores for this past school year. Kind of hard to see. Kind of like a kid out of the light, so we can see those schools that developed. As far as third grade, it looks like Ranger had the highest percentage of forty-four percent. Which was a pretty, pretty good, pretty good overall score. Fourth grade, ELA, we had Midway at forty-six percent, was our highest and next, behind them was Harts at forty-one percent. Fifth grade, English Language Arts, Midway really jumped out there to sixty-two percent proficiency. Just pretty, pretty significant, I believe. And I broke this down by elementary and then we'll move on to middle school. So third grade math, we had a forty-five percent proficiency in Midway, and again, Harts was right behind them at forty-one percent. Fourth grade math, Harts really the leader here, forty-seven percent proficiency overall in the, in the fourth grade math area. Fifth grade math, Midway, again, stronger, fifth graders there at Midway last year, forty-six percent proficiency. You see, scales or scores are kind of all over the board as far as individual schools go. Sixth grade, moving on to secondary or middle school, sixth grade, English Language Arts, Guy Valley was the lead, forty-three percent. Those are pretty, fairly consistent, I guess, across the county. Seventh grade, English Language Arts, again, Duval was the lead there with Guy Valley right behind, a little lower at the southern end of the county. And eighth grade, again, Duval was dominant there with some consistency among the other three schools. Sixth grade math, Harts at twenty-four percent proficiency, looking at, looking what they've been using, I'm sorry, Lee, I believe they've been using Eureka Math at those grade levels for the past couple of years, is that right? Could be a cause, I guess, for an upward trend there. One of the things, one of the documents that we were looking at the other day as far as programs that are completely aligned to the college curriculum standards, out of all the programs that we use, Eureka Math meets all of those areas of all of our other programs. So look to see some good results if they continue using that. Seventh grade math, we had Duval and Hamlin, Hamlin leading the, leading the way there with seventh grade math. Harts had dropped a little bit in seventh grade, but here in eighth grade, they come way back up to twenty-four percent proficiency. And I will not theorize on what may be the reason for that drop in seventh grade math, because I really don't know. Again, you know, our math scores are really, really up and down among our, among our eighth grade schools, or among our middle schools throughout the county. Lincoln County High School, we have, this is just individual from last year, math was at eleven percent proficiency, ELA was at forty-two percent proficiency. So our, you know, we've, we've had a real big focus on literacy and English Language Arts in the county for the past several years, and I believe that's paying off. So we can see our ELA proficiency scores are staying high and they continue to grow for the most part each year. You know, been a lot of discussion around math, Mr. McKiff, myself, we've talked, curriculum team, we've talked, continuing to, to look at that. I do know that, you know, having Eureka Math in place at some of those middle schools, I believe we're starting to see some positive results from that. I know... I know some work had been done at Lincoln County High School with Mr. Jill Ziegler, I can't remember the name of that program, that, that method that they're using.
You know, we're 18% proficient at the high school math phase, but the statewide proficiency rate was what?
Eighteen.
Eighteen percent.
Eighteen percent, yeah. That's important, though. Right. So it's not like we're way down below anybody else when you look at the state, you know, I don't know if this is the best place to state this, but I will, you know, one would have to question the test itself, you know, if you have consistent low scores across the state, maybe the test itself may not be aligned to the curriculum as well as it should be. That's just a guess. So again, I, we're seeing, we've seen growth in some areas, we've seen a little waning in other areas, but again, compared, when you look at accomplished report to the state level, we're hanging right in there with everybody else.
And then one thing we know, based on what can share with us thus far, with the move to the new assessment, there won't be any way to compare the Smarter Balance results with the new assessment, so this year will be a do-over.
Yes, this is the end of this three-year legacy, and so we will have no baseline per se to compare off upper next year, we'll just have raw data, and then there after we will have a baseline to go from. You know, we, our schools are continuing to use formative assessments in the classrooms, the SRI, the SMI, those types of things, and we're using that for information to monitor progress. To me, you know, I know Mr. Lemon agrees with me, wholeheartedly helping this, formative assessment data is by far more important to me than the Summit of Assessment data. Summit of Assessment data is important, I know that that's part of our accountability, but when we're looking at what really matters, and that is how our student's progressing throughout the year, and that formative assessment data is really where you get the needed information. So, Mr. Lemon, do you have anything on formative assessment? Okay. Any questions on any of that?
Now, these test results are still not final, right? These are still preliminary, that the state's not misogynizing and taking out the students, they're not four-year students, and, right?
Yes.
So they're not, okay, so they're not official. They're not as close as you can get right now.
Yes. Yeah, they are, they are public, obviously, I've stated those, the embargo has been lifted. Student, individual school reports will be going home next Thursday, delivered some schools today, and be delivering some more maybe this afternoon and definitely tomorrow. So students will take those results home to their parents, along with an explanation, there's a four-page document that came down from the State Department that goes along with those to go home to students, hopefully explaining how to read those reports. You know, I've long been a proponent of simplifying the way that we communicate these results to parents, because you send some of those reports home, and it's kinda confusing, you know, and so hopefully those guides will assist in breaking that information down to our parents.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Thanks. What happens next year, or next month, whenever that makes a decision.
Cross our fingers and wait.
Just need some consistency.
That would be nice. If we could, you know, if we could just stick with something five, 10 years and not touch it, you know, on that point, that would be great.
Well, this guy's on deck, so he's already moved into the bag circle. Rod Cummings with the transportation update.
Yeah, we have the opportunity to be part of a pilot program, which we're, you know, we're excited about, and it's funny how things turn full circle, you know, in this world, but it's a pilot program for gasoline engines and school buses, which we believe will save us money in the long haul to begin with, working on getting the prices together for two new school buses with this pilot program, which we'll end up paying for, it comes from our money from the state.
Now, the state's limiting the number of those, aren't they?
They are, and we've been talking to them, and I believe we're gonna be approved, we haven't received the official letter yet, they were gonna do 10, and I believe they're gonna give us two from what we've discussed with them, but we don't have the final documents yet. But the difference in price for a gasoline school bus and a diesel school bus is about 7,000 plus, just to begin with. A lot of the problems that we have with our diesel engines is because of the pollution control stuff, well, the gasoline engine doesn't have that kinda stuff, so that eliminates some of those problems. Cost now diesel is about, that we pay is about $2.01 a gallon compared to gasoline, which is $1.81. Now, it is true that we get about probably six to eight, sometimes maybe 10 miles to get on one of our diesel buses, and we'll get a little bit less fuel mileage possibly on gasoline as we do the diesel. But the price is lower, too. Things like oil, a diesel engine takes 24 quarts of oil, the gasoline will take 10. So, you know, we're gonna see some savings in that, we'll see some savings in our maintenance costs because of the lack of the pollution control. Even if, even if we were to have an engine that needed replaced, and a gasoline engine that's gonna cost us about $10,000, just to have a rebuilt engine in our diesel costs us right around $17,000, and a brand-new engine is about $24,000. So these buses will have a five-year, 100,000-mile warranty on it, which will extend us out and help us quite a bit, but we're kinda excited about this, because it gives us the opportunity to work on some of these things and that we normally have to sit back.
As far as, we're also helping the public, as far as starting, maybe?
As far as starting, it should start easier than the diesel, so that should help us with that.
Hook up and.
Yeah, so like I said, we're excited about it. The next board meeting or so, when I get the numbers together, I'll send, you know, the proposal to purchase the new buses with something.
How many buses?
Two, two, not, they started out with one, and we've kinda negotiated a little bit, we think that we can get two, because we think if we have two, that we can put them on two different types of routes, and we can do a better comparison, you know, for the cost savings, but I think it'll be good. Another thing that I wanted to mention, too, is we have, and speaking of buses, we have four of them that are on lock that we'll dispose of, none of the four will run, they'll have to, whoever buys them when that point comes will have to have them towed off their lot.
Do they have engines?
Yeah, they have engines, they just don't work.
Sometimes I, I never know.
Yeah, you gotta be sure. Recently had an inspection, we have another one tomorrow, the last inspection was the first one, we had eight buses inspected, had some minor things, but everything's still back on the road, so we're moving right along with that. Another issue that we had with our relatively new diesel tank that we have at Guy Valley, I think it's been in the two, maybe three years, we had to have it inspected recently, and when we had the inspection, unfortunately, from the time that we put it in, in October 2016, the rules had changed, so there's, we had, they deemed it unfit for service. So currently, we're not using it, we have it blocked off. We're in, Foxwood Company come in and to put the tank in to make the repairs necessary to get it back in service. I don't have the numbers yet, we're looking somewhere in the neighborhood of $5,000 or $6,000. Knowing how things work, the tank at Guy Valley is the exact same tank that we have at Harts, so we're probably gonna be doing it to both of those at least. The other tanks, the old tanks, we'll have to have them looked at to see if they require the same kind of changes, so that's something that's coming around.
Now, when you say, are you saying that a change, they would completely be, have the annuums, or are you saying?
No, 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 it's, it's the type of piping that it has, the type of ground it has, the fittings, one of the fittings alone, the guy was telling me was right at $2,000.
But the tank itself was.
The tank itself is okay. It's the plumbing of that, I guess, and that kinda stuff, so that's kinda where we're at.
Talking about gasoline.
Yeah.
You got gasoline, you got tanks to replace.
Yeah, we have one tank here, the only one at this point, of course, if this turns out the way that I think that it will, you know, we may have to add some gas tanks a little bit later on if we end up going that way. But, you know, I can remember, and I know you can too, that diesel used to be cheaper than gasoline, and now that's switched, you know, so look at saving every penny that you can and make up heaven.
Like you say, it's what goes.
Yeah, what goes around coming around.